We'll call the Metropolis City Council Monday, July the fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Door please. Call the roll.
Barfield.
Here.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Here.
Kurzine.
Here.
Daughery.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Midnight.
Here.
And Mizel.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the many blessings you have given to each and every one. Be with us, council, dear Heavenly Father, that each decision we make will be for the betterment of the community. Be with our community that has lost loved ones this week, dear Heavenly Father. Not only be with the sick, dear Heavenly Father, but be with the caregivers. Be with our armed service personnel, not only on foreign ground, here in the United States, guide and direct them. Bring them safely home to their families. Do as can I precious saint. Amen.
Amen.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the six twenty-three fourteen meeting, please.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Daughery. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
First item, citizens' request. Having none. Mayor's report. You know, we as a small community where everyone knows everyone else, you know, there comes times in all of our lives that special occasions arise. You know, we've always been proud of all of our city employees, our city workers, of public works, all the way down. Occasionally, we do have things that comes to our attention. Most of the time, it comes in a way of maybe a letter or the editor, maybe someone just simply coming through our town, traveling on the interstate. And I'm proud to actually be able to do this tonight. The initial request was actually in a form of an email on one of our employees. The other came from a recommendation of a bulletin that was sent out to the chief of police from Sergeant Manley, recognizing the fine work of Officer Don Helm, Fire Captain Michael Talbert, and the engineer Rodney Brooker. The other recognition came from a, on behalf of an email, that probably and could have actually included some of the people that we've actually mentioned here moments ago. It was actually on behalf of a family that was traveling through the city and actually experienced a terrible I-24 accident on June the thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Goes on to say that "We are so appreciative of the compassion, patience, and professionalism that was extended to all of us. We are incredibly blessed." I am sure, as you read this in the email, your response is along the lines of "We were just doing our jobs. From our perspective, Mr. Davis and the first responders went above and beyond. Again, thank you very much. We wish you and yours many blessings." Colleen McKinnon. It makes me, as the mayor, very proud to actually recognize these city employees. We probably need to do this more often, you know, it doesn't take a horrendous accident, maybe someone's life or something in that things that should, it should not take that for us to be appreciative of the people that we have working for us and the fine job that they do each and every day, you know. Policemen, firemen, each and every day that they probably go out. It could be a fact of maybe them not coming home to their loved ones because they do have a very difficult job. I'm proud of the leadership that we have in each department. The memo actually from the, as far as the police officers and the first responders of Mr. Brooker and Captain Talbert, actually came from a emergency nine-one-one call that actually CPR, many things were administered to a gentleman. Defibrillator was actually used. And I, as representative of the city Metropolis and from the city council of the city Metropolis, we would like to recognize each and every one of these gentlemen for their contribution and efforts to the city Metropolis. And if you would, I would like to have Mr. Davis, Mr. Brooker, Mr. Helm, and Mr. Talbert to come forward. We'd like to get a picture. And if you would like to have your families included in that, that would be fine also. We want it to be a community family effort without the, most of the time without the ladies that actually support these gentlemen and the jobs that they have to do about hours of the day and night. You know, a lot of credit goes to them also and their families of what they give up and the shifts they work and stuff like that and the things they miss in their lives. And in a lighter note, everybody else is dressed in full color and full parade. We appreciate that. I can see something in the budget for Mr. Davis, probably of some kind of uniform that he's going to want to buy. I can see it coming right now, you know, his mind's working right now to see what he's. And we'll take suggestions from the audience if Chief Massey and Chief Morris want to contribute something, you know, what that outfit might look like.
We bought him a polo already.
All right. All right, if y'all would come forward and we'll get a picture here. Jody, let the kids come on up and have their picture taken here too. And the ladies, all of you, we'll make room in here. Ladies, we appreciate what you all do also, and sorry, we, sometimes I appreciate you.
Okay, guys, let's sit down a little bit.
As for the fire and police committee, as chairman, I would like to thank each one of the officers and their families. We see them so many times when the fire truck, but what we don't see is when they're in training to provide the services that they provided in this case. And I think the committee would like to say thank you.
Well, I agree with that. Mr. Carroll, you know, we do have a highly qualified police department and a fire department. They do a fine job. Actually, I hope I didn't hurt Mr. Funkhauser's feelings this morning. I actually called him on the phone and told him I didn't want to upset him or anything like that, but he didn't have to water the soccer fields until I notified him. And I know that meant a whole lot to him, you know. So, you know, it's going to be three or four days before they have to water out there, you know, so. Everything has a good ending. All right, we do want to thank each and every of the families for coming up tonight. It does mean a lot to us. First item, and feel free anytime you want to. You do not have to stay for this boring meeting, so feel free to leave anytime you get ready or stay the whole meeting. First item on the agenda. Motion to accept the reappointment of the following Metropolis Public Library Board members. Ron Ashby, Mr. Bill Carroll, Jim Haley, Deana Hopkins, and Ed Bridges. Moved by Mr. Kurzine. And seconded by Mr. McManus. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On an update event, I am very disappointed in having to announce, and you need to do the best you can to notify your constituents. The electronic recycling event scheduled for July the twenty-sixth has been canceled by the recyclers. This company actually came, or was going to come, out of Wisconsin. They waited till the, not being critical now, but the advertisement had gone out, groceries had been sent. We had distributed them, you know, uptown and on the internet, Facebook and whatever, and then at the last, they actually called and said that it's canceled, that for whatever reason, they didn't think it was feasible, profitable wise, for them to make the long trip. Immediately, we got on the telephone and researched on the internet, and we actually called about seven other recyclers. And right now, I don't know whether it's the recycling market, but there's just not enough interest in it right now. Probably for profitability of taking the components out, the market must be flat or something. But so far, we have not found anyone that would be willing to come in on the twenty-sixth. And we have called at least five or six companies. We found out about another one today. We called, we didn't get a response. So, we're going to continue to try to do that, and it's not looking real good for that right now. So, kind of help pass that word along. Next item. Motion to accept request for first installment from the FY fifteen Metropolis Tourism Marketing Budget for the amount of fifty-nine thousand nine eighty-five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Got questions, mayor. I've been asked some questions since two thousand and eleven, as far as a network. Is there a network or is it just a tourism? Or we're given money, and I know last month we approved as far as the recommendations, as far as what they ask for. And I understand that, but I've asked about the network, and is there a network?
Right now, I, I mean, I don't think there is a network.
I mean, who's accountable as far as?
Well, you have a tourism person that actually works for the city Metropolis through the tourism bureau, and the recommendations are coming from the Metropolis Tourism account. You know.
But as far as a network, there never was, there isn't.
This is not, none of this is going to the network. This is actually to pay your employee.
And then, I understand that.
Yes.
And then.
And the tourism budget that you approved was all items, from the Superman Celebration to each and every tournament, and maybe Mr. Barfield could address it a little better than I have. But it actually is coming from recommendations from the tourism bureau. Budgets items.
Yes.
Yes.
And we have been given a budget.
Yes.
Balance out everything, so we're up to date on that.
And that does, I mean, and it is a lot of money. I mean, I agree a hundred percent. But it is through their budget, it is in a budgeted form. You've received a budget for what it is and what it is, and now you're going to have a time that it's going to be dispersed and paid for the Superman Celebration, the Blues and Qs, well, not much in Blues and Qs because it's self-supporting, but the archery tournament, things of that nature, for the whole year.
But one thing, we do have an amount going to the network.
Yes.
Supposed to be for mess reading purposes.
Yes, and I think that's going to change in the near future.
Okay.
It's not coming out of the general fund.
No, no, no.
That's what people need to understand, just as M A T C funds.
Right, absolutely.
And most of the time, not all the time, but anybody that, you know, that's time available is always welcome to go to the tourism meetings. I think they have them on, Mr. Barfield, the Cinco Tuesday.
Cinco Tuesday, yes.
Right here in this chambers, and everybody is more than welcome anytime you have the time to come. And I don't, I don't go to many other.
It's a very good functional committee. They, I mean, they really work hard at it.
I think they do a good job of what they do, and they are accountable for the funds. Then each and every one of them is, it comes as a recommendation from the full tourism board.
Yes, sir.
So. Did that halfway answer your question, Mr. Mizel? Okay, we do have a motion. We do have a second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept request for first installment in the amount of twenty thousand two seventy-five from the Metropolis Tourism Directly Administrative Position, and that's your nine grand.
Some move. Second.
And I do think in the comment part of that, there is going to be some meetings that's going to come up through the city council, probably the finance committee.
Right.
You know, some announcements and things of that nature in the near future. Won't be tomorrow and probably won't be this month, but within the next couple of months, there's going to be some work that's going to be done on the upper level of the administrative side. We're good at that. We do have a motion, we do have a second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
No.
Thank you.
I do think that's. I think that's all under the mayor's report. Corporate council report, Mr. Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to yield my time to our CFO, Tricia Sills, and our financial advisor and underwriter, Carl Ramey from Stiefel. I know he's, you came in from St. Louis, he probably wants to get back on the road, so. And I don't have anything, so you might as well. Yours is double? If somebody would drive my car to the edge of town, I'll just walk. Since the chief told me that his budget's going to be doubled. Well, thank you very much. My name is Carl Ramey. I'm with Stiefel Nicholas, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve as your underwriter on the refinancing of your two thousand and five bonds. As you know, we have about nine million five hundred thousand that are available and eligible to be refinanced. And in today's market, I can tell you that our earlier projections, which we presented to the city, I can, I'm pleased to say we're holding our own. But before I go into any of that, I want to report to you on the results of our most recent rating review by Standard and Poor's. As you know, when these bonds originally were issued in two thousand and five, I think it was a triple B plus.
Yes.
And then recently, you were rerated by Standard and Poor's, and you improved to an A minus. And we're pleased to report today that the actual written report, we got the oral announcement today, you've been increased to an A. And I think that's a reflection upon the management of the city's finances and the diligence that you all have paid, played in making sure that in today's world, every dollar has to count. I will say that we've not seen the written report, but from my understanding, the real strength underneath, that underlies that rating is your cash balance. And the fact that you have maintained an informal policy of maintaining strong reserves to protect against unusual downturns. Now, we've gone through an unusual downturn, every thought. But I can tell you that I spent thirty years in city management before joining Stiefel twelve years ago. And I went through the last great depression in the eighties. So, you know, one downturn is not, you know, the end and the only one that will ever happen. So, your diligence is being rewarded today. And how is it being rewarded? Well, when it comes time to selling your bonds, it's kind of like the credit rating scores that you see on TV. You know, there's the guy that stands there with a seven-twenty, and another one that's got a six-ninety, and the other one's got a hockey mask on. Well, fortunately, you're not the hockey mask. And there is a direct correlation between your underlying rating and the interest you pay. And so, you know, we think that today, today's report is going to bode well. Our goal is to be in the market two weeks from today to issue, you know, to sell the bonds. I will be back here that evening. I think that's your regular council meeting night. I'll be back to report on that bond sale for you. Current projections suggest that we are still probably in the neighborhood of a ten percent savings. As you may know, we have suggested restructuring the transactions so that we take advantage of what we call in the industry, the yield curve. Bonds are sold annually, on an annual basis, generally speaking, and the lower, you know, the yield curve is kind of like this. One year out is low, twenty years out is higher. It's just a matter of how long you have to, somebody is willing to loan you the money and the risk that they take in so doing. So, from that standpoint, we have changed things around because obviously, the world is different than it was in two thousand and five. You know, the casino and the gambling revenues, et cetera, have, you know, public knowledge. It's not done as well. And yet, what we think is good is that you're being, you know, Harris is coming forward and is reinvesting. And so, I think that bodes very well for the city. So, for those, you know, for a number of reasons, we think that this is going to be a very strong credit. One of the things we're going to try to do, we've already set a motion now that we knew, you know, what the rating was going to come out as, is we've actually gone to the two major insurers. I've talked with them. Six, seven years ago, there were, you may have heard, you know, there were insurance companies, you know, there were five or six AAA insurance companies that were willing to essentially insure the debt. So then, if for some reason you were to fail to make payment, they would, you know, they would come in and step inside your shoes and would make whole the bondholders. The collapse, the great financial collapse, also saw the great collapse in those insurance companies. There are still two of them that are out there, Build America Mutual and Assured Guaranty. I've talked with both of them. Both of them were interested in at least taking a look at the credit. If we're successful at, and it really becomes mathematical, but if we're successfully securing insurance at a premium that saves you in the long run, money on your interest cost, they would, the bonds would carry, generally speaking, a double A rating instead of a single A rating. We will know more probably within a week's time as to whether or not, A, they're interested, and B, what their premiums are. I had a recent client that we got a very good quote on, and it made sense. We got another one that didn't make sense at all. So, from a financial standpoint, it has to be economically beneficial to the city. And we would only do so if it was economically beneficial. So, tonight, you have on your agenda a ordinance.
For first.
For first reading. There are a lot of blanks in that ordinance. Those blanks will be filled in once we actually conduct the bond sale. Associated with that ordinance are a number of other component pieces that are all part of the bond sale process. There are, included is the preliminary official statement, which is essentially the document that is, while it is the city's responsibility, it is a city's document. And so, but we at the same time use that as a, if you will, form of prospectus. And so, that when we are in the market, marketing your bonds in advance of the sale, that's the document that we use. There's also things such as tax compliance. There are, and I'm not even going to try and explain what the tax compliance is about. I'll let Rick do that at the time. But I put the pressure on you, sorry. But, no, seriously, the, there's a continuing disclosure. One of the things that I will tell you is very, very important, and the city has been up to date now, is investors and the Securities and Exchange Commission expect that people that issue debt are transparent in their financial and operating situation. And so, we have what's called a continuing disclosure requirement, which they're, you know, the city will annually post on a national website that information so that investors or anybody wanting to buy your bonds in the secondary market have the opportunity to take a look and see what inside. So, there's a continuing disclosure agreement that you would, you will be entering into as well in this process. So, a number of items on the agenda, and I've probably talked far too long. I'm very pleased and I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the financing team. I can tell you, I think the mayor and the staff, Rick, and Tricia and Christie, they have gone way overboard, you know, in helping us turn these documents around and giving us the necessary information. And I guess that's also why you ended up having to, having seen over time your underlying rating of the city improve. So, any questions, I'll be happy to answer, or anything that I may have touched upon.
Carl, I guess it was last week we actually spent the day together, was it last week or week before last?
Oh, last week.
Last week, yeah. I think sometimes these bond, getting the documents ready and things like that, it's kind of like, you know, kind of dreading to go to the dentist, you know, because you never know what's exactly going to happen. But I will say this. But I, I will say this, and Tricia and Rick and I actually made the comment last week after Carl left. We've had several meetings with, with the folks and stuff like that. The telephone conversation and the things we had last week were very pleasant. The young lady that actually conducted the telephone conference did a, an excellent job. I'm talking about, put everybody at ease. She was very cooperative, very complimentary. Carl, I think, done a tremendous job in leading Tricia and Rick. And none of this could happen, none of it couldn't happen if it wasn't for the city council that is sitting around this table, that are willing and able to sometimes make those very, very hard decisions to make sure that the city metropolis is taken care of and it, it comes back. We've all, as a group, have always made the pledge that we are never going to run ourselves out of money. We will always have a reserve for anything that unexpectedly happens. Things like this is why we're in the situation we are today, and it's not from something that I do or anyone else does. It's, it's from the leadership of the city council that's willing to, to do what has to be done to make it right. And believe me, none of it could happen as far as where I'm sitting, if it wasn't for Tricia. Tricia, I believe, is the finest chief financial officer that I've ever seen in any community. And we go to a lot of communities. And I'm just telling you, as far as what's best for us, there's not a finer employee in Illinois or probably anywhere else that, that does what Tricia does for the amount of hours. I mean, she gets paid for a certain amount of hours, but if she got paid for every hour, we'd all be working for her, you know. And Rick spends a lot of time, you know, in doing that. And I, all I have to do is just keep feeding him and patting him on the back. They do all the work, and, you know, I'm just supportive and stuff like that. But I'm going to tell you, from where I sit, I would hate to know that I had to work without a city council that in the hard times are willing to stand up for the people and watch right and support what goes on in our community. And I want to tell you, not every day, because I'd be telling a great big old lie. Not every day is pleasant, but at the end of every day, we have, have a very pleasant relationship, and that's what it's all about. If you're going to do it, let's do it right. And I commend each and every one of you for the, the role that you all do. And I think Carl knows, you know, like I said, he's been a city planner. It's not by one, it's by a group of people that work together to make things like this happen. And I do appreciate that.
Oh, I, I know your, your feelings, Mayor. I mean, I've worked with a lot of communities, both in terms, in terms of being in the public finance group at Stiefel Mills and in my city management days. And I echo the fact that it is a team effort and it's, it's not one person. But I will tell you that you have an excellent staff and I clearly echo the mayor's comments regarding Tricia. I've, I've worked with lots of finance directors in my life. She has made my job easier, and I really appreciate that. And as well, as a city attorney, I mean, so I, I thank you. Now, we've got, we've got to roll up our sleeves and get the rest of our work done.
Just get out there and get that little carpet bag and stuff like that and start selling stuff.
Yeah.
But, and Christie, Christie Cook Stevens, you know, Christie is great as your financial officer, you know, as far as taking care of the money and making sure it's, it's put in places, it's protected, and actually making money as we go along. So, Christie's not here tonight, but Christie is a treasurer, keeps a good eye on what we're doing, and, and she does a good job of our investments. So, she should be thanked also.
I'll stay around if you'd like for the ordinance or whatever, whatever the pleasure is.
It's, it's, it's not necessary. I think, I think the ladies and gentlemen around the table are quite pleased with what you presented, and I think it's all right.
Very good, sir.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip back home.
Oh, we will.
He's included in the group.
You're still looking for candy bars.
I don't know what to tell you, Jerry. Moving on. Corporate council, do you have anything else you want to throw at the mix?
Not to, not to close session.
All right.
Industrial committee, Mr. Midnight.
Yes, Mayor, we have one item as a recommendation from the industrial committee. So, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules in place of ordinance approving redevelopment agreement with Burnham's Collision Center upon its passage, and this is?
Twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Midnight, second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand fourteen dash twenty-eight, approving redevelopment agreement with Burnham's Pride Collision Center as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Midnight, second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all we have at this time, Mayor.
All right. Moving right on along, Water, Light and Street Committee, Barfield.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The Water, Light and Street Committee did meet last week, July the ninth, and we have the following recommendations written for the council. I will make the following motions. I will make a motion to recommend to the city with amulet to make repairs on Carter Crestview project with the concrete at the rate of six dollars per square foot for an estimated cost of twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation for HMG to televise a storm sur on Sixth Street between Catherine and Nofia in the amount of fifty, one thousand five hundred dollars for four hundred feet with extra charge of two hundred dollars per hour if lines are clean prior.
Mr. Barfield, I'd like to make a comment on that. At the time of the Water, Light Street meeting, we discussed that we might need to video that line. In the sense, with your permission to go ahead and start charging my time to the city, I looked into that, and at this time, it would not be wise to go ahead and expend that money for the video. I'm going to continue to gather data, and I'll get back to you if the videoing actually needs to be accomplished. Right now, I've been working with Frank this morning, and we've decided that the actual videoing of that line will not be needed, but we will need to do some further investigation. So, if you approve, I will continue to put my efforts and charge the city for my time in looking for solutions.
So, videotaping will not be done, in other words, a video of the line?
It would be premature at this time.
But maybe later.
There is other data that needs to be collected.
Proceed with the investigation of anyone.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Should you start cleaning that line on Sixth Street, and you run into a low spot, and the camera gets submerged, then you're going to have to clean it. Are we going to be charged two hundred dollars a night a week?
We will not be, there are short runs that are short enough that I know where they go and what they feed into. I need to do some investigations with some dies, take some elevation readings, and calculate the watershed for that area before we narrow down and videotape the lines. That area is, the elevation is the largest concern. It is rather low in that area all around, and I'll have to bounce the field data versus the topographical data, make sure it matches up, because if it's underneath the floodplain, the videoing won't help, because it's underneath the floodplain. That's where water will be regardless if there's pipes in the way.
I'm going to draw my second.
Mr. Barfield?
Chad Dugger.
Mr. Barfield?
Well, I mean, I would make my motion to work with HMG.
This is all the motion and Mr. Corzine withdrew the second.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chad is to move forward.
How much are we going to, latitude are we going to give him? I mean, are we going to set a?
Ever what you tell him.
A limit?
Do we have a best, but it ain't chat.
I mean, just, I know the checkbook is not something I'm willing to vote for.
Yeah. I understand, and we will give you a?
How about bringing it back with a rough estimate at the next Water, Light, Street?
It will be a not to exceed amount proposal, and my, we're actually putting that together right now.
Okay.
That's true.
That's correct.
I'm just going to lie on my own way.
All right. I will have my motion amended as to work with HMG. And they will get back with us with an estimate, our proposal.
We'll bring that before the city, I mean, Water, Light, Street Committee at the next scheduled meeting.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Did you still second that, Richard?
He withdrew his second.
Withrew his second, okay.
And you withdrew the motion, so?
Right. We just, we, we.
He's got another motion on the floor.
He did not withdraw his motion. He amended his motion.
Okay. Amended to proceed.
Proceed with HMG.
Well, I'm, I'm a little bit understated. He didn't want it to be the motion moving forward till he had, he brought us the recommendation. I can't have it both ways, so which way would we go?
Well, I'm just not prepared to vote against this, because until, until we know how much it is, we need to just withdraw totally and be done with this.
I mean, I would rather make a motion with tables and send it back to committee and?
I would draw my motion and just take it.
All right.
Going to table it back to the committee. That's where it should be.
All right. I will accept the recommendation to purchase a load of bulk high-grade salt from my system for the quarter price of two hundred eighty-five dollars per ton for a total of seven thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars from Carr Gill Salt. Not to exceed two thousand.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Corzine. Call the roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to accept the recommendation to purchase an emergency standby generator at the waste water treatment plant from Cummins, Russell Electric, and Parker in an amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, plus rental. Generator is a replacement.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Midnight. Discussion?
This was discussed in great detail.
Great detail, and here the.
And this was the best.
Quite a week ago.
That's right.
We were well watering this around for about two weeks.
Russell Electric and Parker is for the installation of this generator, right?
Yes, sir.
They're not furnishing nothing.
No. This time and later. Any other session? Call the roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
That goes to our report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
Thank you.
Next item, Water, Light and Street Committee, Daughery.
Yes, Mayor, council, we have two readings, first readings on the night. Our first is first reading on bond ordinance, refinance existing TIP bonds. Our second item, first reading of an ordinance approving a tax compliance policy and procedure. Our first readings on both.
Is that second one included?
It's in, yeah, it's in those documents that I sent to you guys, and it's in your package, it's actual ordinance. Don't ask me to explain what tax compliance, really what a tax compliance ordinance is. You'll have a policy that makes sure that the bonds you issue are made tax exempt. On an annual basis, you will be that, make sure that you don't do anything. It's usually as new, if you're going to actually receive proceeds from bonds and they're going to sit there for a while, you can't arbitrage, you can't put them into certain types of investments. If that doesn't happen, you're just going to pay off an existing debt, that's all that's going to happen.
That's all we have.
Thank you, sir. Next item, Police and Car, Mr. Carroll.
Yes, Mayor, we have two items. I make a motion to accept the training at the annual medical legal death and homicide investigation conference for Chief Harry Massey, Scott Demings, Rick Griffey, from August the eleventh through August the fourteenth, in the approximate amount of three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars.
There's a, there's a title on there. I'm not going. It's Mike Kennedy, Deming, and Griffey. The detectives are going at me.
Mr. Kennedy?
Sergeant. Deming and Detective Griffey.
All right. So noted. Mr. McManus seconded. Motion made by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next motion, I make a motion to accept repair to the ladder truck with Sentinel not to exceed two thousand dollars. If there's someone, I don't remember everybody there at the committee meeting, but it was a second run, it was a V brace at the very top, and it had to be replaced, inspected to qualify for insurance and so forth. And they moved it to, Freeburg was it, Chief?
Correct.
Moved it to Freeburg for the repairs. That's my motion.
When you have a motion, we do have a second by Mr. Corzine. Call the roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
That completes my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Department heads. Stony?
Everybody heads up the COTR, if you're in town, doing the Carter Crestview primary work. So, if anybody gets in phone calls, want to know what they're doing back there, they're hoping to be finished up on Wednesday or Thursday.
Stony's been in meetings with them, helping coordinate the work and stuff like that at least twice in the last seven, eight days. Hopefully, that will put all of that to rest. I think they poured concrete today on Crestview. How much did they get done, Chad?
I wouldn't be able to go out this evening, but they shouldn't be. But if they finish up, they'll be finished on the concrete, so.
By Wednesday? I think they'd have that in probably at least three fours, maybe two, maybe. So, it is moving along. Keith?
The city's emergency operation plan that you guys approved a couple of weeks ago has been sent to AEM, and we're waiting on final approval of that. Once we get approval, then I'll make the copies and give to the appropriations.
I will say too, there was supposed to have been a meeting today down at Brookport for the less old, lasso, however you want to pronounce it, for the state federal surplus program. They were actually coming down. Kurt Howard, which is over the Springfield office, was actually going to be in attendance, and they were going to be a statewide recognition of everything, you know, that's been sent to Brookport since the tornado and things like that, and what they do for communities in the same situation. That was canceled. If we did not have that today, and I'm not sure when it's going to be rescheduled, but it will be rescheduled. I'll try to keep you informed in case any of you who wants to go down. It is going to be quite a deal, you know, so as many of you as can, we do know, we need to support that. We actually, in the last two weeks, we got a very, very nice D three CAT that is, that is a very nice piece of machinery. And we actually got a little trackle type thing. It's got a name, and I, I don't know.
So, that's bigger.
One of them had four hundred hours on it, the other one had five hundred hours on it. There's no telling how many thousands of dollars those two pieces of equipment. We have one in-house right now. Mr. Kurt Howard actually kept one of them in Springfield in the yard there, because he had a little bit of moving around and grading and stuff like that that the state wanted to use it for. So, Chief Massey actually extended them, the courtesy of leaving it up there and let them use it till they bring it on down. Those are, there's no telling how many hundreds and thousands of dollars that those pieces of equipment cost, so.
That'll sure help on those close easements.
Oh, yeah, I mean?
That's what we need, exactly.
And we, well, and they're on rubber tracks. So, you can actually get them up in the yards and stuff without tearing something up. Terribly bad. And we actually, they're small enough, they're big enough. We can actually move them with our own equipment and not have to pay somebody to move them around, so that's a good thing. Harry? Anything else?
Nothing.
Chief Morris?
Nothing, Harry.
Gentlemen, they, Chief Morris is actually wearing one of the dress uniforms that we all actually bought, updated, not too often long ago. Unfortunately, most of the time, when you see the fire department and the police department in those uniforms, usually there's some tragedy behind it. But they do, let me tell you, when you go to a funeral or something, that it is very impressive to see our representative from the fire department or police department in dress uniform. He just says something about the safety of their office, so.
Mayor, can Mr. Kovak report anything on the fire and police committee? We have three members today, the chairman is, as far as the, as far as the testing. I've been asking about that.
Well, we did have a meeting on July the third to get the thing going. We've worked on selecting the testing and stuff. We had both chiefs there and this man over there give us a lot of guidance. We learned a lot. And we're just getting, working on the scheduling and cycle testing.
Are you the chairman now?
Yes.
That's one thing we know. Appreciate what you do. I know it's a job.
We're working on it.
You heard that old saying, get in there and done with it.
We're still, we have one member that is not been, has not been able to attend. Alvin Carter is still having some very serious health issues. Fortunately, we have two people that's brand new on that board, Ken and Mr. Mike Cordy. And they've certainly stepped up to the plate and running, you know, with something that's brand new to them too. And Ken has done a tremendous job of researching. I know he's talked to Mr. Carroll as a past board member. And it's going to be fine. We're doing a good job. Anything else? Chad, do you have anything else to bring up?
No, sir. Yes, I'd like to, on the twenty-fourth, we lost our standby generator during power outage. I want to thank the mayor and Keith Davis. Within an hour, we had a standby generator on site. And I'd also like to thank Stony and his group. They came out, they hooked it up, and it went just fine. I mean, I appreciate the teamwork and the help and the extra effort.
I didn't do a whole lot physically, but I did tell Keith to just drive around the community. If he found a great big generator, just hook onto it and bring it on down, so. It was fortunate, it was fortunate he found one, you know, pretty fast at the, you know. Come right on.
Hey, that's what's got us in trouble with late law, when you stole that transformer at the time.
We're on camera, we said stolen.
I'm not sure everybody's sitting up there. Let's just leave that alone. Something you're not, you know, it's better left alone than something. New business, or, I'm sorry, old business. New business. Miscellaneous reports. Financial report, payment of salaries, payroll, and contract bills. Call the roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Payment of miscellaneous bills. Motion made and seconded. Call the roll, please.